I'd like to call to order this regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of September. And our first item of business is to accept the agenda or else to amend it. I am not aware of any desired changes.
I move we accept the agenda as stands.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? And that carries unanimously. Moving on then to public comment. Is there anyone not with the Park District from the public here wanting to make any comments? And seeing no indication of that, I believe we have some new staff introductions. So you, you going first, Janet?
It's been awhile.
It has. But we're glad you're here.
Thank you. I've never been to a board meeting where we actually had microphones and TV cameras. Because 2006 was my last full-time hire.
Wow.
My goodness.
Erica started in 2006. So I'm here, do I have to introduce myself? No, doesn't matter. I'm here to introduce our new community program coordinator. And this is Nikki Hosman. And she just started on August 21st.
Welcome. Glad you're here.
Hello. Thanks. That's it.
Nikki, you want to tell us a little bit about your experience?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So I grew up in a small town in central Illinois, kind of western from here. And I completed my grad degree at SIUC Carbondale. And I did rec administration. I did a short internship with the Coast Guard. And now I'm here. So I'm very excited.
Wow. What a drastic difference.
Yes, it is. Yeah, but I love it. Yeah.
We're not very military here.
No.
It's all dry.
We still need rescuing, though, so get those skills.
Great.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome aboard.
Aboard.
Thanks, Janet.
Thank you. Okay. And our second introduction?
So I wanted to go ahead and introduce our intern for this fall. This is Desmond Rembert. And he is working over at Brookins in Sports and Athletics. And I'll let him tell you something about himself.
Hello. So I'm from the south suburbs of Chicago. I work under Kyle right now. Studied at the University of Illinois under RST, Recreation, Sport and Tourism. And currently doing my internship to fulfill 12 credit hours for my degree. Yeah.
Great.
That's it.
He's already helped with Jazz Walk and a few other things as well. So he's not just staying in Sports and Athletics.
Excellent.
You'll learn more than you ever thought.
Nice to have you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome. And thanks for coming out tonight.
Yes, we appreciate it. Thanks, Ellen. You too.
Next up is the Updak Report.
Roger was intending to be here, but he sent me an email this morning that something had come up and actually he injured himself. And he said he's on crutches at the moment. So he is not going to be here. So I just wanted to pass that along and could answer any questions that you have. He had something in the board packet for you, a summary of the meeting.
We're ADA-approved.
Right.
Well, except that that door, that first door coming in doesn't open for meetings at night, so.
So, yeah, he said he's supposed to stay home and rest and elevate.
We'll push the button for the future.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
Well, I thought the written report was reasonably clear, so.
Okay.
All right. Next item of business is our consent agenda for the evening. Included on the consent agenda, our approval of minutes from the August 1st board study session, minutes from the August 8th regular board meeting, our set of monthly reports from the various departments, administration, planning, operations and recreation, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, action to accept the August philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and action to approve ordinance 2017-09 to authorize the disposal or sale of personal property of the district. Under the rules of our consent agenda, it is the privilege of any single commissioner to remove any item or items from the agenda for separate discussion and action. Is there anyone wanting to remove any of these items from the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as listed.
Second?
Okay. So may I, just to make sure that this is clear, you're moving approval, not just the agenda, but all the items on the agenda in an omnibus fashion?
Yes.
Okay. And the second to that? Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that we approve all of these items in an omnibus fashion. And under the rules of our consent agenda, there is to be no further discussion at this point. And we will move to a roll call, starting with.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners present. That moves us on to reports. First item being financial reports.
I don't think we've ever gotten here so fast in a while.
Oh, don't worry. I'll slow us down tonight because I have six reports to discuss tonight.
Okay, we're ready, we're ready.
So don't let me forget after the capital budget report, when I defer over to Derek and Andy, to come back because I have a sixth report to talk about. So tonight I'll be discussing the financial performance of the Park District for the four months ending August 31st, 2017. The first report I'll be discussing is the fund balance report. And this is a report showing the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for these four months. The first page is what we call sum one. This is all funds excluding the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this period were $5,958,000, which is an increase of $1,421 since July. Four million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand of this revenue was property taxes. And just for those at home, we receive our property tax payments, the majority of them in June and September for the year. So our revenues are very front-loaded at the beginning of the year due to our property tax receipts. And property taxes make up about 70% of the Park District's revenues. Expenditures for this period were $2,723,000. And we have a surplus after four months. And this means there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $3,235,000. And net change in fund balance shows an increase after four months of $3,235,000. Sum two shows only the capital improvements fund. Revenues for this four-month period was $157,000 and expenditures were $356,000. Expenditures exceed revenues at this time, and that means there was a deficit of $199,000 and a decrease in fund balance in the capital improvements fund of $199,000. We're budgeting to spend down our fund balance in that fund really over the three years that we spend the bond proceeds. We should be spending that fund all the way to zero, but there's always a rolling balance because of projects that aren't finished yet. That balance is usually around a million dollars. Right now, it's a little high. So we're budgeting to spend that fund balance back down to around a million dollars for this fiscal year. And sum three is the first two pages added together. And it makes up the entire Park District summary. And sum three, the very bottom item on the right column, shows that at this point in the year, if our year were to end right now, our ending fund balance for the whole district would be $9,471,000. Following that are the summary pages for our main operating funds, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. The next report I'll discuss is called the Budget Analysis with History Report. This report shows a historical comparison of the same four-month period of the current year and the prior three years. Four months is about 33%, so that's a number you can compare to throughout the report to check for reasonableness. The first section of this report is all funds district-wide. And on the middle of page two, you can see that total revenues and transfers in for this period were $6,197,000. And we've received 74% of our property taxes thus far for the year. You can see that expenditures are running ratably consistent with the prior three years. And in fact, the majority of our expenditures are running better than the prior three years. You can see, there is one item that's more than the prior years, which is on page three. You can see for capital expenditures that we've spent $80,490, which was the purchase of the property on Franklin Street. And we didn't have any activity in that particular budget line in the prior three years to that. The reason for that is this item that's called capital expenditures is only those capital expenditures in the land acquisition fund. All other capital expenditures are lumped into that item that's called bond fund expenditures. That's our bond payments and our capital improvements fund expenditures are lumped into that. Is that clear for everyone? So that's a change. But overall, as far as expenditures go, they're doing really well so far this year. On the bottom of page three, you can see that total expenditures and transfers out for this period were $3,160,000 with a surplus at the end of August of $3,036,000. If you don't have any questions about that report, I'll move on to the next one. The next report is the Treasurers Report. This is a report that shows the amount of cash that the district has on one day, August 31st, 2017. If you were to stop a clock right at the end of the day on the 31st, this is how much money we had in the bank. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested. Like I said, I removed the James Memorial Fund from this list of funds. We had 25 last month, but that fund was completely spent out at the end of FY17. So it had been lingering around on our reports with zero dollars. So I went ahead and eliminated it. So the cash that we have at the end of August is $11,257,405.3. In the middle of page two, the first section at the top of page two lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of the $11,257,000 that we have, $9,849,000 is in investments. And I'm continuing to, Dottie, before she left, she set up a laddered CD program for us with Commerce Bank. We have eight CDs at Commerce Bank, and they're ranged between three and 30 months. So there's a three-month, a six-month, a nine-month, a 12-month, and then there's three 30-months, some others in between. But the ones that mature on that regular basis, the three, the six, the nine, I just continually roll them over. Every time they come due, I analyze our liquidity, make sure we don't need the funds, and just reinvest them, usually the same day or within a week. And I've just been really pleased, I rolled over another CD in August, and a couple more, and one in September, too. And they're, so far, have always been increasing the interest rates. So ever since I started as business manager, our interest rates have improved. So you can just blame that on me. But, you know, it's just, our economy, our economy has improved since the recession. So we've been seeing that. So our interest rates aren't particularly piddly anymore. I think we're upwards of $40,000 a year in interest now on these investments that we're making, so.
But the downside to that comes at the end of the year when we let out our balance, so.
Right. Usually the interest rates are driven up then on our bonds, too. So it's, you know, you take what you can get. Where was I? Okay. So that's all I have to say about section one. The next section is dispersments. Total dispersments of funds are listed at the top of the next page, page three, and they were $766,000. Again, that's a little higher than that average that I think is around $500,000, but it's the end of summer. So that's why. We have a higher payrolls, we have all of our spending for camps and everything that's going on during our summer season. So that'll slow down now that we're in September. And the final section lists inter-fund loans. Currently, we really only have one inter-fund loan, which is between the English Fund and the indoor pool. And it's a rollover loan for cash flow needs according to our inter-governmental agreement for the indoor pool. And with that, I present the Treasurers Report to you for approval.
I move we accept the Treasurers Report for audit.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? That carries unanimously.
The next report is the Supplemental Report of Cash. This is, this report shows the same information as the first page of the Treasurers Report, but it groups the information on this report by expected use rather than by fund name. So it gives you an idea of the types of different cash that we have available. So you can see of the $11,257,000 available, $1,268 is restricted obligations, leaving $9,990 available as spendable cash in the various restricted areas that we have. I don't know why I said restricted areas, but in the various classes of information we have, which are daily operating funds, restricted special needs, and restricted gifts and donations. Are there any questions about the Supplemental Report of Cash? I think that the Supplemental Report of Cash was particularly interesting when we were first establishing our restricted needs, which is mostly taxpayers that paid under protest that we have in reserve, waiting for those cases to resolve. And so it kind of gets a little repetitive since they don't change very often. So just kind of is what it is right now. And now I'll touch on the areas of activity in the capital budget. So those items highlighted with an asterisk are where there's been activity this period. In the 2017 capital budget, we received funds in the tributes and donations line. And we also received a gift from the Ambucks Club for improvements at Ambucks Park. Expenditures occurred on the Larson Park tennis court. Manual was purchased for the new 72-inch mowers that we purchased last month. And a toolbox for M13 was purchased. And new concrete driveway approach was poured at the dog park. And the pre-cast panels at Kerr were caulked. Those were down in the contingency section, those last two items. On the 2016 capital budget, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects. Technology funds were spent towards network improvements at clapfac for the new pool chemical controller system. The sediment basin.
Clapfac is Crystal Lake Family.
Excuse me. At the Crystal Lake Family Aquatic Center, Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center for the network improvements. And the sediment basin project continued to incur expenses. And the final payment was made for the Liel gazebo and PRC roof repairs. And finally, the 2015 capital budget expenditures occurred only towards the rain garden project. And now Andy and Derek may have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yeah, I have a few updates. Last month, we had a bid out for various interpretive exhibits. These include interpretation for Douglas Creek, Prairie Overlook panels, Bio Swales at the Nature Center parking lot, and two kiosk signs by the playscape. One is a map and one is a rule sign. We had a bid opening on September 1st. Taylor Studios was the low and only bidder on that project. Came in at $13,000. And we are currently filling a contract with them, should be completed this week. We will be paying each respective interpretive area out of the respective budget areas. So Douglas Creek will come from grant and donations for the Douglas Creek project. The Prairie Overlook is the WIT donation and Meadowbrook Fund. The Bio Swales is out of the saline project budget and capital contingency. And kiosk signage will be through the Nature Playscape budget and some museum funds.
Obviously, being $13,000 is below the threshold for you all to approve, but we want to let you know how bids came in. That's been typical for us. When we work with Taylor for design work and we turn around and bid the work, they often are the only bidder. We thought we might have another group out of Chicago that expressed interest, but in the end, they didn't bid it. It is about what they estimated for us when we started doing design work, so that's the good news there. And we're really excited about their design work. I think you all will be, too. It's a new, more modern look. I think the overlook panels in particular just look fantastic.
So will it be a coherent design between all of these projects? Okay.
Absolutely.
I did want to report on the sediment project a little bit as well. I think last meeting, Derek and I probably both showed up with some dirt on our shoes. We were out at the site that morning. We have results back. Don't have a final report yet from MET, but what we saw was almost an across-the-board decrease in the PAH concentrations. There were 13 different concentrations that had results back on the report. 12 of those 13 saw a decrease. And seven of the 13 are still above the tier-one level. So we cannot yet at this time make a definitive plan, but what we've talked with the city and with MET is that the city is going to allow the sediment to stay on the current site for another year. And what we're hoping, and MET is pretty confident, is that the levels will continue to decrease. And by this time next year, we will test again early summer, and we should be able to have a good report back to be able to not have to transport to the certified waste I did want to note, too, that we're working with BCA on additional scope of service with Stark. And this will include, if the sediment can stay in Urbana, it will be an easier move. It's pretty much staying on the exact same site, and it's agreed upon by the City of Urbana. And instead of the north slope, I believe, is where it was going to go, it'll stay and then just be pushed a little bit to the south slope. So the actual scope of work itself, if it does not necessitate moving to Danville, will actually be a simpler project. And we should see cost savings for both the city and ourselves in that scenario. So that's pretty good news all around in that. Last thing I wanted to mention is KRT connection in the public meeting last Thursday. Our staff, Derek, Kara, and myself, and Tim was there, and we had a station. We're presenting information on trailheads. What is a trailhead? The master plan for Weaver Park. And then we had a sticky dot activity soliciting information from the public on what kind of amenities they would like to see most in a Weaver Park trailhead. And I think our staff was pretty happy with the number of people in attendance, and we got some excellent feedback. I think we're all now just excited to hear back from RPC on that final plan.
What were people most interested in having?
It was, yes. Yep.
That's on top of my list.
Bathrooms and water fountains were the top two by far.
Yeah, sure.
They're related.
What we did find was kind of surprising to us going into it was that bike racks and the station for bike repair were actually very low.
Really?
Yeah. So we were talking during the event, and we were thinking that maybe it's because people aren't seeing it as a place to stop and park their bike. It's where they're loading and going on their bike. And if they're having a picnic, they may have their bike alongside them.
Oh, sure.
Maybe that's what we could come up with.
Do you think a bike repair station would be?
Just wondering. People haven't seen those in this area as much. Maybe it's a new concept.
Yeah. I mean, it seems like a given, such a, I mean, it would be a luxury to have something like that.
Campus, don't they have a couple on campus that they recently just had it?
Because one of the parking garage downtown city of Urbana, sometimes they don't work real well.
Right.
And Cynthia's got a recommendation for us about one that she thinks is well-tested. The bike pump for the tires particularly is something that's challenged. And so we're considering a design where it's a separate bike pump that you can swap out if it goes bad. I also think if you kind of looked around the room, a lot of people that attended were some of the stronger bike advocates. They probably carry tools with them. It's part of what I was thinking.
That's a good thought, too.
There were certainly clusters of things. And I think it got a smattering of votes.
Right. Right. And yeah, but I think, I bet you're right, because it's not going to be the, you know, every month or once every two-month biker who's going to come to a meeting like that. And they aren't thinking about in advance how handy that would be to have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The event we had afterwards in the park was really nice. Felt right, you know? It made you a really nice setting and some nice remarks from Michael and the mayor and Dan Olson. So, you know, those same professional cyclists went on their ride out to St. Joe for ice cream. So it was a real nice event.
Good.
That's it for me. Katie?
No, I might just mention a little bit on the caulk, because I collect a question about it, and all the rest of the board's curious. This is a caulk that we used to seal the concrete panels on this facility. It's basically a joint caulk, and there's a backing rod. It's a really fancy product. I mean, it's a two-part epoxy-type product, polyurethane, actually. We learned from the county that you really need to stay on top of this. They ran into some issues with moisture penetration that ended up costing quite a bit. They have a different construction methodology. BLDD assures us that we won't have those similar problems, but it is important for us to stay on top of these joints in keeping them well-caulked. We initially got proposals to do the entire facility, but as we looked at it more with the folks we got proposals from, it was really the south side that we needed to caulk. And so that's just where we worked, a little bit over $5,000. And that's the sort of thing we should expect to do. Every five to 10 years, five years where you have southern exposure, 10 years where you don't. So we expect, but the next round, we probably will do the entire facility.
Yeah, I just gave a thumb test to a couple of the things coming in. And the ones that are facing north are still plenty pliable and appear to be adhering very well, so, yeah.
So it's just aging of the weathering?
Yeah, especially with the sun.
Yeah, yeah.
But they were bad on the south side. And we needed to show gaps and tread, so.
Oh, yeah.
Think about it, they're just large concrete panels that are sort of stuck together with this caucking. And there's support stuff there, but that's really the weather tidying, so.
So do they take out part of the old or do?
They do. They cut it out and move back and rub and replace it. But if you think about the alternative, you know, any other sort of material, it's much more maintenance. So this is the one thing we've really signed on for. No painting, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
It's not exciting to look through place shortly.
No bugs chewing through the concrete. Yeah. Oh, good.
Shall I continue with my last report?
I think so.
Great. So this month, I provided you with some bond information about our upcoming bond sale that will take place in November. Typically, I've put this information in the October board packet, but Dave sends this to me in August, so I had it all ready. So I thought, let's just go ahead and talk about it in September, because October seems to be a busier meeting where we start talking about the levy and some other things. So I said, let's go ahead and talk about this. And Dottie used to just put selective pages of this report that Dave sends in the board packet, but I thought I'd go ahead and put the whole thing so that you could have a more comprehensive look at all of those different exhibits that he includes, in case you were curious about any of that. So if you'll recall, we held a BINA hearing last October, at the board meeting in October last year. And BINA stands for Bond Issue Notification Act. The act requires that we, the issuers of general obligation bonds such as us hold a public hearing at least seven days before a bond sale. And the notice of such hearing must be published in a newspaper between 30 and, seven and 30 days before the public hearing, and posted at the office of the governing body. We followed all of those rules, and we held the BINA hearing in October. The act allows BINA proceedings, which is the publication on the public hearing, to cover multiple series of bonds, as long as the bonds are all issued within three years of the hearing date. So the district's last BINA was last year in 2016, which will cover the 2016, 2017, and 2018 bond sales. And then will be required again to BINA in 2019. So this year, Spear Financial will hold a competitive bond sale on November 13th, which is a Monday, for $710,000, which is a two-year maturity. Basically, the 710 gets split into two increments, and the amounts get split based on how much debt service extension base we have in each year to pay it. So we maximize our current year's debt service extension base and push the remainder into the second year. That saves on interest, too, because the higher, the interest rate's always higher in the second year because you're bonding the money out for longer. And so the less you can put in that second year, the better. It keeps your interest rate lower in the front end. The dollars that we'll receive on December 5th from this bond sale are the dollars that will fund the 2018 capital improvements budget. And we will be presenting the capital improvements budget for the next year at the November board meeting also. So you'll have an opportunity to review our plans for that budget before you approve the bonds, or at the same time as you approve the bonds. We're only two years away. I kind of wanted to point out one particular schedule to you. And it's the schedule on, hold on. Okay, sorry. The schedule on page A2, sorry, appendix A2, just a couple pages in. You can see that our 2017 bond sale, it's the second-to-last line, we're going to sell $710,000. Uh, but the 2018 is the final year that we'll have any of our debt service extension base in the two-year maturity. So after that, we'll be able to issue single-year maturity bonds. This has been a long process since about 2009 that Dottie has worked with Spear on, um, to, to maximize our bonds into the one-year maturity. So your, our debt service extension base, um, when they passed the law in 2009 that was amended in 2011, allowed the debt service extension base to grow by the change in the CPI. Um, and at that time, we, is when we started on the track to start trying to maximize our, um, bond sale into a one-year maturity. So it's finally on the cusp and it's very exciting, uh, because it'll save us money in interest and it'll also allow us to issue a slightly larger geo-bond, um, because we've been keeping our bond issue lower so that we can continue to, um, push less and less into that second year. We're finally to the point that we're done pushing anything into the second year and we'll be able to issue the entire amount of the debt service extension base, whatever that may be. So we'll be able to grow to approximately 732,000 in next year's bond issue and then the one after that, um, which he, uh, indicates on, within the letter that he wrote on the first or second page, the next one will be able to be about, uh, 823,000 with a one-year maturity. So, um, it's kind of something I'm excited about. I think the other planning and operations, um, leadership is excited as well because it'll allow us to do more things. So, um...
Critical time.
Yes. Uh, some, those estimates, the 732 and the 823 will change, uh, based on what the final changes in the CPI are, but that was just to give us an idea. So if there's no other questions, then, um, feel free to reach out to me as you read through that information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but this is kind of the standard information, pre-bond sale information that Dave provides us that shows what debt we have outstanding right now. It gives the schedule of our future debt payments and then there's an estimate for what, uh, the expected bond sale, uh, should look like within that schedule as well. One of the appendices shows that.
Thank you, Katie. Um, moving on to the executive director's report.
Right, lots to report. Let me see, I think I'll start on the inside cover. Um, just a follow-up. Um, from our study session, uh, we had the School for Designing a Society come and talk to us about a continued proposal to try to work together in some sort of, uh, composer cove concept on the Franklin Street area. Thought it would be a good idea to pull in our arts and culture team to really start working on that agreement. Um, I think our strategy for us certainly needs to be something that, you know, we've got to get to a win-win if that's going to work, but certainly we have to be careful of incurring costs. Um, I think all of us would agree that there's, you know, we've had experience with a lot of different groups interested in doing something. Um, obviously if it's a new impact or starts to cost a district in a way that wouldn't necessarily be an advantage or at least a balance, we're going to try to really work on that. Obviously, we're not sure how things will end up, but we're going to give it a go and first probably meet with them and talk, you know, what are the capabilities, what are the, sort of what are the assumed, uh, kind of components that they can live with, couldn't, and we'll be doing the same. But ideally move to some sort of, uh, agreement that we could bring back to you all and, and try to see where we go. Um, obviously the house at 117, we're recommending not to move through with demolition. I think it was clear that there's a interest in trying to, you know, uh, put, put people into the houses. I'd recommend we get our agreement done first before we would advance, you know, starting a rental agreement that would just put us back in the rental business without a purpose. So we kind of need that agreement to, to see if that's going to go forward. Um, I mean, I think it's, looks like both parties are interested. Obviously the details are where we have to work out cost and how we manage things. Um, but, you know, ideally there could be a way that we could help each other and still come to the long-term benefit of is, is Crystal Lake Park able to pick up the extra property? Or it's so successful that we are happy with our arrangement and, you know, could continue that way in an in-between status, but ultimately, yeah, we want to settle who owns the land and as properties are for sale, nail that down. So we'll be coming back with more information on that.
Are there a 501(c)(3)?
You know, I don't know exactly what status, those will be things we'll ask, but yeah, they're not, not-for-profit. I understand there's different classifications, so we'll, we'll see where they, they fall on that. Um, and just walk it through the normal process we normally would.
Right.
And come back to you all with hopefully a, a proposal. Um, staff's been continuing to work on our capital improvement plans. I think we're at a kind of a point after our last finance, uh, study group meeting, we had looked at a variety of options. How do we get our hands around some of the biggest projects like Crystal Lake where ideally you would have, you know, considerable resource to move through the various stages over a period of time? I think what staff's recommending now is we really should go back and start looking at our capital improvement budget. Is there any way we can shift, shape, rethink, redesign, repurpose, anything that we have in the attempt to try to reduce the number of projects? Um, because I think what we're finding is we're trying to do regular ongoing maintenance and repair, just upkeep out of our capital budget and develop major facilities. And those are really challenging, you know, to do. Uh, you know, in ideal world, we'd probably all agree, if you could save your capital development for just ongoing maintenance, maybe, you know, things that come up, maybe surprises at a facility, um, and try to find other ways to get at those bigger things. We're, we're not at that point, so I think we're going to at least give it a try. Now, we've tried that approach before and what we often find is everything we have is sort of dear and sacred to, to everybody or somebody. And so I could easily say, oh, we don't need that and, but somebody else will speak up, oh, there's layers of people that are dependent on that. But we still feel compelled, we should go back and go through that exercise. Um, and it's, I, you know, once you start examples, obviously that could lead the discussion through the night, so we'll save that, uh, for another time. But I think that would be a valuable exercise to at least identify, are there any things that could shift or change or another way to, to look at the ongoing programs we have going on? Um, we had an interesting meeting, um, a couple of discussions. Looking ahead at Binkert Grove, um, what to do at that site after review of the, uh, estate, um, papers, obviously it was recommended as a, as a bird sanctuary. And so we had recently met a person that's in the community, um, through the university, JP Galgen. He's very interested and has worked quite a bit in doing what he calls wild foraging sites, which is kind of a wild concept. Um, no pun intended, but the idea of really just looking back at our landscapes, how they used to be when early settlers came and how people relied on the land for food and, you know, reading the landscape, those sort of things. So when we started, you know, thinking about that idea of, you know, gee, that's interesting, where could we do it? We kind of thought that the Binkert site might be an ideal site for that. As a bird sanctuary, you would probably assume that there's some limits on what you could develop there. So your more traditional park schemes start to get set aside and I think you start looking at more of a, you know, passive natural area. So when we started thinking, gee, that's wonderful for the birds and wildlife, but how do we utilize that and sort of justify the maintenance of a site like that? So when we start talking with JP about, you know, how are these things done, how are the, we really saw overlapping parallels. Basically, if you're creating wild foods, animals could benefit from, there's certainly an opportunity that adults, humans, might be able to, you know, benefit from that also. So we want to continue to meet with them to see what, you know, what kind of proposal we could couple. Um, we've actually brainstormed quite a bit on the Binkert site and really just couldn't think of types of site uses that didn't start to impact, um, that, that kind of, you know, request from the family that it become a, a bird sanctuary. The other reality is it's out of town, it's not a traditional park site and it isn't probably realistic in our working careers that we would see Urbana grow to where that would become a typical neighborhood park.
Can you remind me where it is?
Yes, it's at the corner of Perkins and, and High Cross Road. So it's just a few, if you know where the Apple Dumpling is, it's just about a quarter mile, eighth of a mile down south from there.
The northwest corner.
Yes, above that, yes, thank you.
There is a bus stop there.
Yeah, bus stop right there. So the idea of could school kids or camps or splash or anybody get there, it's probably likely they could. So it's very unique, but we're kind of excited because we think we might have an ideal, unique, um, interesting and needed kind of resource in the community. From a volunteer basis, you can imagine that would be probably reasonably, I don't want to say easy, it's always hard to get volunteers, but something that would be attractive to a lot of groups to at least, you know, connect with or do a, a, you know, little volunteer work there. Um, you have a question?
Yeah, well, uh, uh, and if I remember correctly, I mean, it's, there are not a lot of old, uh, original growth trees there. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a...
Kind of a homestead that was.
A homestead that's grew, has grown back up again, yeah.
Obviously, I'm sure as the, you know, Binkert's ability is to manage, you know, their home site, you know, diminished, probably less was done, you know, in the outside world there. Um, so we think in many ways it has a, you know, uh, it's a good site because you could take things out or a few things that are still valuable. So we want to explore that a little more, but very excited about the idea of, you know, having a use that actually is of need and interest to us. There's always a need for sites like that for teaching and education. Um, and it would be just hard to develop a, a, you know, sanctuary site that had little human use but might need a lot of upcare and, and keep. Um, so would like to come back to you with more concrete ideas. We definitely want to involve some university students in landscape architecture. We could see developing some schemes to, you know, get us going. Could be very neat and I think we, we have an opportunity. As far as the house and property, we would recommend, we'll still continue to move through demolition. Um, I think there's nothing of, you know, salvage there as far as, you know, restoring and rehabit, habitating. But, uh, I think once the site is cleared and, you know, basically get some of our main liabilities under control, we'd like to explore that. So we'll come back with more proposals and more information on that. Um, as Derek mentioned, the KRT planning session was terrific. I thought it was well-attended. You know, we typically see staff sees often the same groups of, you know, cyclists and transportation enthusiasts. I think whenever I've seen any sort of transportation-related open houses, generally you, you get a lot of the, the transportation folks, but your average family, you know, isn't necessarily the group to, to come out for that. Um, but we did have good representation and I think we'll get a lot of great information. Um, the follow-up event was terrific. Again, had a nice group of people there and just, it was a real feel-good moment for, for all of us, so felt very, very pleased about that. I was able to ride the KRT. I don't know if anybody else has been out there to ride it. Did it on Sunday, it was really terrific. Saw Bill Gray and Libby Tyler out there too. They were just out checking it out. Um, but it's, it's going to be terrific. I think, you know, the volume of people, the energy, the excitement, I think it's going to help spur development in that 130 corridor. You know, Mayor Marlin's talking about pancake house out there and we think that's a terrific idea. And I just think there's a lot of, you know, potential we'll see when there's interest with people being in that area. It was very, I wouldn't say crowded, but it was very well-attended, a lot of people passing both groups, individuals. I was also surprised at the number of walkers.
Ah, that's what I was going to ask you.
Yeah. I, I honestly, I didn't expect to see many walkers and there were walkers out there. And so it's interesting because you'd almost, you could go as far as you want and turn back, but, you know, it'd take a little time to walk all the way to St. Joe and then back. And I saw at least a few people that we saw, you know, both ways that were doing that. So a nice mix of family, mix of diversity, it was just really interesting. I think it's going to be a boon for us at the Weaver Park site and we'll see exciting things, uh, to follow out there. So stay tuned. Uh, let's see, moving on, let's see. I mentioned in my written report, we had the, uh, Center for Health Aging and Disability Open House over at Presence Hospital at the NX. It was also well-attended. I was kind of surprised, um, with the mix of typically, we work with a lot of older adults, but there were, there were younger people, people either through their work or, yeah, through some of the medical, um, facilities that actually showed up. I covered the Parks and Open Space Station and the things I heard people talk about. Again, older adults, I'd say some younger 20, 30s, but certainly they love our parks, they think, you know, always want more parks, connectivity is really critical. Comments I heard from older adults, aquatics year-round is really important, having places where you can, you know, kind of as the body ages, have some low-gravity sort of, of recreation. So I heard good comments on that. Um, I think wayfinding, knowing and finding your way around is a really big issue. I think it is for everybody, not just older adults, but kind of the message I heard is if I know where I'm going or know more about it, I'm willing or more willing to go. But if I can't really figure it out or, and I can't get the information easy, then I'm more reluctant to want to try or go new, to new parks or new facilities. So I think all the effort that's been done with wayfinding in the community is, is really good timing. And I think those things will, will help bring more people out. Overall, general satisfaction, again, connectivity and transportation, everything from people without vehicles, how do I get to a site, which we're familiar with, with that issue. And also, I can get there myself, I just need better connectivity, more trails, more sidewalk, um, good bus routes, good roads, good lighting, you know, to be able to drive and, and get around. So again, I think our plan from there is let's get our activation plan. What are the, sort of the key elements we want to start addressing for this all-age focus in, in our community? Uh, Special Rec just want to give a report. I, um, as you know, we're continuing to look at space as part of our strategic plan, but I did get a, uh, message, actually I saw Bobby Gorokovich at, uh, KRT Open House. We talked and she suggested I talk with folks at Cunningham's Children Home. You know, they're doing expansion and doing some renovation work there. Uh, one of their leftover, um, areas that they don't have as much need for is at, at their old gym space. And so we do want to go take a look at that. I, I think in talking with their leadership, they're, it's, it's an older facility, it's not in great shape. The money and resources they're getting is to build new, not necessarily fix the old stuff. So, but we, we feel it's worth our, go over and visit and take a look at that space so that it might have to offer. It's called the Odom Recreation Center, it's their gym. So they had just suggested it could be a place that Special Rec could participate in activities, you know, use some of the gym. So we definitely want to go look at that and, uh...
They also have the pool, the indoor pool?
It's in, on their campus, but in a completely different spot. And I think talking about shared uses, it's a little more complicated there because they have a daytime program and they have residential. And so they split the groups and so everything from finding open time blocks that a, let's say an outside group could come in is challenging and also mixing of crowds and audience. One of the concerns I think is, you know, we're continuing to look for spaces that get, um, our participants exposed to the community, not secluded in another interior space. So we want to look at it, but kind of visibility is, is really critical. But we'll see what kind of opportunities it has. Secondarily, we invited, um, Special Rec staff over to Phillips to take a look at some of the, um, second round plans for the proposed kitchen. And I think they're really excited about the potential there. They have a kitchen at Haze and it works. It was funny because Andy and I and Derek were talking, you know, I thought maybe we heard different things. I think what their staff was saying is, at Haze, we, we like it because it's at Haze. And I think they meant just because it's there and it exists. Obviously, if there was a better place they could go or a different type of facility, I think that'd be of great interest. So again, we're interested in the kitchen for a variety of reasons. One, our kitchen we have currently now is very small, it's, it's hard to use as a teaching or learning, you know, experience. Has some access issues, which we knew about shortly after our ADA, uh, report was done. Um, but more importantly, creating active spaces that kids, different comm, community groups would have a place to plug in and actually, you know, use. When we went to visit some of these other kitchens, we learned, you know, they're very active, they're always, any program that they're offering usually fills up. Again, the numbers are probably around a dozen or so, a dozen of 15, can't have 60 people, you know, around a stove. You expect that to be a, a learning, uh, experience. So we, we're excited, we'd like to explore that. Obviously, that's a new capital cost and one that we would have to, you know, look at and see where that fits in our, our priorities. While there could be some help, you know, through the, um, ADA support dollars that we have available, it probably wouldn't cover all the cost. So we need to look at that and, and see where that goes.
Tim, do you know if, if the new Sultan Light is going to have kitchen?
You know, I don't know, I didn't see kitchen listed, but I do know it's a more expanded type facility. They're going to do, I think several of us were talking about that, you know, more classes, more community connections. So definitely something to check out and talk with them about. So definitely something to check out and talk with them about. So let me look at my notes here. That's just a little sculpture update. We've had some new pieces come, I should mention. I think in December at our study session, we'll do an update of our sculpture collection and just do a highlight on that program, that's the opening we found in the study session schedule. But this fall, we've had some action out there and around the community. Meadowbrook at the Wondell Sculpture Garden, we installed Surge, done by Jackie Willis, Peoria area artist. We also installed Transformation. That's by Fisher Stoltz. That's also in the Tim Pony Grove at Meadowbrook. We are bringing in a new piece coming probably in a week or two. It's called Prairie Lantern. It's by Nicole Back, who is an artist we've worked with in the past. Leaving us is Hamilton III. That's the one located right at Windsor Road West entrance of the Sculpture Loop. That's Barry Tinsley's work. He didn't have another piece right now that we could trade out, so we'll loop back with him and I'm sure work with him again. He has terrific art. Bruce Neamy's Tall Ships II will be leaving. It did a two-year visit with us. That's the one on the Wildflower Walk that's elevated up on that little berm. Will be likely replacing any of the open spots. Got a couple of things in the wings that might come back to us. Obviously, if you're at the Foundation Event, you saw the barn quilt, which was a wonderful addition out there, very attractive. Seemed to captivate a lot of people's attention. Lastly, I wanted to mention, I think we've reported, the Marin Foil sculpture at Phillips is continuing to crack. We have concerns. You remember many years ago, like 15 years ago, we had Roger Lakely and Cecilia Allen take a look at it. They were probably best all-around local artists that we had available. They inspected it, and I think, you know, they indicated that due to the type of stone, the limestone it was made of, it's more porous. It was made for an indoor setting, which it was indoor at the old Lincoln Square for many, many years. When it was placed outside at the old Thornburn, probably that began it's, and it may have been outside before that. I don't know its full history, but I thought it left Lincoln Square and probably was donated or given to the Park District. It's really a piece that may be difficult to repair. So what we'd like to do is take it away from Phillips, store it at the Agri Street site, try to see if we can have a conservator look at it, see what its, you know, restoration approach would look like. I know what Roger and Seal said is, gosh, there's not a lot you can do with it. There might be a way to inject, you know, filler or sealer, excuse me, sealers into it to, you know, make it more weather-type, but it would probably mar its appearance, and it would never be, you know, a solid piece again. But there could be new techniques and new conservators, so we'd like to, you know, take a look at that. Given its history, we think it's something we, you know, should at least check into. If there is a way to fix it, we'd have to balance that with the cost, you know, is it cost prohibitive, is it worth it, basically? So we'll leave you with more information on that. But it's probably something we wouldn't just cast aside and say we're done with and, you know, because I think there's a lot of people that, according to Phillips staff, that liked that piece, and they remember it and talk about it. So we'll keep working on that.
Is there a way to think about moving it to a more sheltered location?
We talked about that. We just couldn't think of, I think probably the trick will be if it's in good condition, can be restored, you know, if it looks good. If it's not looking good, we might have to think about our options at that point. We could certainly move it indoor in, let's say, a storage shed and just keep it, but I'm not sure if that helps anybody if you can't see it and it's not in the public viewing. So we'll really have to see. You know, we have a small budget working with sculptures, so, you know, at what cost could it be restored, if at all? So we'll really have to see where we go with that.
Is, could we think about putting it in one of those sort of patio areas at the back and sort of creating a little farm, barn area for it back there?
At Hickory or Phillips?
No, no, at Phillips.
At Phillips.
Yeah, depending on how we reuse those back patio areas, there might be a way to...
I think one was proposed as, at least if we move forward with the plans, which we'll share, would be sort of taken in and enclosed to create more indoor space for storage and for the kitchen area for, you know, that space. But we'll take a look at that. Maybe there's a way or somebody that we could work that. But again, it probably should have, not probably, it definitely should have been a piece that should have been indoors, and I'm sure that would have helped prolong its life. Now, I don't know anything about the stress or anything internal, you know, that may have caused a cracking on its own anyway, but it is a unique piece, and we'll see what we can do with that. Let's see, I think I covered the critical things. Oh, one other comment, too. I think in October at the study session, we'll be having staff present, share a proposal. You know, this summer, we did a working project with Clark Lindsay in a shared intern-staff approach. I think we're looking at recommending, is there an approach to go to the next step after we did our sort of follow-up eval with Clark Lindsay and the Park District? I think they're very interested in working with us in a shared-staff way. So Corky and Laura Byers from Clark Lindsay will be giving us update, what was done in the past, kind of what kind of program we're looking at. We took a look at what could be, and it's pretty exciting. So I think you'll all be interested and see where that could go. Again, it's a new approach, something we haven't done or done much, but we think this would be the right organization in the right time if we were able to do that. So we'll get more information on that in October. Can answer any questions you might all have? Again, I thought the Foundation Event was terrific. I think the meet and greet at Jazz Walk, well-attended. I think people had a good time. Think our social kind of setting is starting to work, and people are more familiar after going a few years in a row. And of course, the weather was great and had the doors open and made it very conducive for people to get to know each other.
And someone wrote a $500 check.
That's right.
That's what I was going to ask.
And brought a friend.
Yep.
So I think as far as friend-building and getting the word out, I think it's starting to catch on. So excited about that.
I think there's, Janet said there's roughly around 3,000 people.
3,000 people, yeah. It's definitely our best attended.
It was a big one.
It was beautiful weather. I think it's the best weather.
Yeah, she must have been so happy to sit over the sky.
Right.
We did work with Clark Lindsay, and we were able to borrow their golf cart.
Oh, good.
Holds five, five people, I think. And we shuttled from the Stone Creek Church Lot.
Oh, great.
I did like the first hour and a half, and a lot of surprised people that we were doing it, and they enjoyed it. Of course, if you didn't hit them on the right, you know...
If you didn't hit them, it'd be a good thing, too.
Wasn't all perfect, but, you know, I think it really goes to looking at our age-friendly status and trying to really help make that transition easier for some of the people who need it.
Yes. Corky, if it was older adults or what? It sounded like it was a mix, people with young kids or children to walk in.
It really did police itself. I mean, our goal wasn't to just give everybody a ride. We're looking at the small kids, parents with small kids, or those older adults that can't walk very well. And those who didn't need it said, no, we're fine. We'll walk. And so it was a good first trial for, you know, some other events that we do. So we'll hopefully continue that working relationship and do some more of it in the future.
Lastly, I said it was done, but I should have started because I see my note at the top. I did want to thank all the staff in Planning and Operations and Recreation for helping with Thursday night event for the ribbon cutting. It was kind of a quick throw-together, and everyone was real pleased at how that turned out. And also for Jazz Walk, just pulling that event together, the meet and greet, and just keeping the whole site moving and going. Yeah, it was done very well. Can answer other questions at that point, though?
Anything else? Okay, moving on to the President's Report. We obviously in upcoming meetings have October 3, Board Study Session, and October 10, the regular board meeting. We usually on our sheet here have some of the items that come out of our annual calendar, and those aren't here yet, and I confess, I did not look at the annual board calendar to see what...
I know Katie and I were just talking about putting the draft together for our annual calendar coming up. I think the November meeting is when we approve sort of all of that, but we'll get that up to...
Okay. But getting some of the items that we normally phase into the, back into this would be a good thing. I had a couple of comments about the KRT, both the event at the County Highway Building. I was quite pleased at some conversation I had with the Regional Plan Commission folks who are working on that. There's some creative thinking going into how to make a good connection from the existing KRT to Weaver Park. So I'm hopeful that there are going to be some things come out of that design that we could take some action on in the future. Won't have to wait 50 years to make a decent connection there. So I was pleased with that. And I thought the event in Weaver Park afterwards was pretty well-attended and perhaps getting us associated with some people who don't come out to a lot of Riverbend Park District events. So that's a good connection to make, too.
It was.
I was really pleased by that.
We have a couple of follow-ups to meet with groups after that, so that's always good. We love that.
Moving on to liaison reports, the Finance Study Group, we did meet, I'm forgetting the date already, but I guess it was, it was still August, it was right at the end of August.
It was the 28th.
And did discuss some things that have already come up here tonight. I think one other thing that sticks in my mind that's going to, at some point in the not terribly distant future, become a serious policy issue for this board, we're getting to the point where the long-term bonds used for this building and then, and later, the pool, within the contractual arrangements of those, they could be paid off and relet. And it's by doing that, we might be able to generate some money in the near term to put into projects. It would be at the cost of extending the payoff time of those bonds. And that's a really a tough choice for a board to make. Do we just stay on the schedule of paying those off, or is there some advantage to us to re-upping and committing out into the long-term with those bonds? So I hope people will keep that in mind that where our philosophy should be, do we try to do some of these not quite as big as this building or as the pool as projects? Can we find some way to absorb those without refinancing, or do we really need to go that way? So I'm sure there'll be a lot of detail come forward, but that's something for the board to be aware of, that we're getting into that area. Anything else to, you'd like to add, Bob?
I don't think so.
The UPD Policy Study Group, is it? Anything?
We have not met.
Yeah. And Riverbend Parks Foundation Representative, Lashonda?
The website is now completed, and it's live. Ellen's going to be sending out a link to everyone so we can look at it, the final product. We talked about the Witz donation. I don't know, is it...
I think it's, you know, we haven't done a news release, but I think they're comfortable with, because we're working on it. But we do have a PR rollout, you know, coming once they're ready for it.
And the question with the foundation was, and they've been in discussion with the administration team about the funds, when the funds for the sculpture, should they be given to the Park District Department for the sculptures, or should the foundation purchase the sculpture and then give it to the Park District? So there's some discussion on which is the best way to handle that, correct?
I think they recommended that. I think it was, Lashonda is correct, it was discussed. Staff recommendation was, could we, this time, get the foundation to purchase the sculpture? Because it is a gift coming through there. But our huge benefit of that is to really have a PR announcement, the foundation's making a large gift to the Park District. So we think really that's probably the biggest value. I think we're all, you know, aware of Champagne Park's foundation is very active doing things, and, you know, it was in the paper with news, so we definitely want to follow suit with that.
Getting them in the paper is...
But getting some attention for all the hard work that everyone's putting in is really important.
They also introduced, they have a new intern. She's a research assistant at the U of I to help with fundraising initiatives, so hopefully she can give some great ideas in moving forward with fundraising initiatives. Also, we talked about the joint meeting scheduled tentatively for May 1 of 2018. It seemed like it worked better for everyone last year, but that's not set in stone just yet.
That's a Tuesday on our normal study session.
That's a study session, yeah. And that's all I have.
I had a question about the intern. Would they be housed out of the Park District's offices?
There are no foundation offices.
She's working with Ellen. She's working with Ellen, so...
She's just getting started.
But is the foundation supporting her? Or is it all...
I think they actually have, or have...
Okay.
We'll follow up on the actual mechanics of that, but I think that was the understanding is if there could be a...
Most interns are free.
Right.
There's a small stipend. Next to free.
I think they're very willing to help, but we'll finalize that just to make sure. But I think that's our understanding as well.
They're also looking for additional trustees, so if you guys know anyone that might be interested, they have a total of 14 trustees, I think, but several slots for additional people who would like to be a part of the foundation. That's all I have for that.
Thank you, Lashonda. Is there anything from the Updak Planning Study Group to report?
Not a thing.
All righty. I think we have our programs scheduled for the rest of the year.
Yep.
And I will probably meet later in the year to look at our next upcoming or anything that comes up in between.
We're cruising.
Okay, moving on to the old business portion of the agenda, there is none to deal with since we took care of all that on the consent agenda. So moving on to new business, action to approve Resolution 2017-11 to execute an electricity supply agreement.
Well, last week at our study session, I went through a presentation about the history of our participation in the Chambers Electricity Cooperative. And if you'll recall, we were given a draft agreement without a rate, and that rate has been finalized at 4.977 cents. So very competitive, I think, especially because we were told the city had 5.3 cents that they just locked into.
Yeah, I thought it was 5-something.
And the rate that they had proposed in August was 5.4. So we're pleased we waited.
Yeah.
And that's the, I think that's the thing with this electricity market is every day is different, and, you know...
And this is a two-year lock-in.
This is, it starts in January 19 and goes through December 2020. And it's just, every meter's a little different, just depending on the meter read dates, but approximately January 19 through December 2020. And we already are in a current, the agreement we're in right now is 5.975 cents, and that's through December 2018. So this will pick up right where this leaves off, and we'll see some savings. So I would recommend we move forward with this agreement.
Well, I move to approve Resolution 2017-11, a resolution to execute an electricity supply agreement.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Is there, wait, this has been moved and seconded, requires a roll call vote, and we'll start, Lashonda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And that carries unanimously with all five commissioners voting. And I don't believe we've had any new business removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to comments from commissioners.
I just have a question. Can you clarify? You mentioned it in your report, Tim, but we're changing these titles to study groups from committees.
Yes. I think, Michael, go ahead.
Well, I think this is something that does need to go to the Policy Study Group and get formalized into our board manual, but in point of fact, the way we have been operating, what we had called committees was as study groups. There was never any formal vote taken in any of those things. And so I, and I think it's also a good idea that we indeed formalize that in the board manual, if that's what you're approaching.
Right. I just wanted to, because it is in the board policy manual as standing committees or, and also just to explain why we changed the name.
We'll get a meeting together.
Great. Great.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, well, I guess we have finished our agenda, so I will be happy to declare us adjourned.